Okay, we'll start up our meeting again. And we'll be talking section on...
Drawing up our evaluation.
Drawing up evaluations, but this is a work session portion of our meeting. And the three items that we talk about is evaluation. We'll talk about the wood processor and...
Jason's.
Oh, Jason's, right.
Policy for taking injured people into the nursing home.
Right, okay.
The jail.
Nursing home.
The jail. First of all, I think, how do you feel about employee performance review, self-evaluation type thing? You think the employee should fill out a self-evaluation? Some agencies do it, some agencies don't. Any comments?
Just thinking, I mean, is a... Are the majority of the employees going to be honest about their own performance?
Well, it's a case where, in my previous job, I filled out a self-evaluation. Supervisor filled out the evaluation, and then we sat down and talked and compared the two.
And then the advisory council did you too.
Well, that's true.
And everybody in the world would do it, and each, the whole world evaluates you.
I know, but the... What I found was, I was harder on myself than the supervisor was.
Really?
But that's me. Maybe somebody else would feel, geez, they've done a tremendous job, and they deserve 100 in each category of 100. So I don't know, but I think it sets a stage for a discussion and maybe a good evaluation if they fill out what they think is important, what they've accomplished. And probably even more important is what their goals are for next year, and where they would like to increase their educational strengths by attending courses or whatever. So I assume then that we're okay with the self-evaluation? Hold on. Any comments?
You didn't give me one of those, Jan.
I... no, I didn't. Which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at the one that we are presently doing, using.
Oh, I haven't even seen that one.
I have that, can I see that?
Yeah.
No, I don't have this.
Actually...
I have the self-performance review. You had two of them?
Yeah, you got this one.
Two hundred.
You got that one?
We had...
How many?
I had picked two from other counties.
Okay, and I have one print on my desk. I had only done self-performance.
That's the one I have, from Rockingham, and that was the other one, yes.
How do you feel about the applicant having to answer these questions? I mean, it's easy to write down one, 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 one. I would think it would be to our advantage if we requested that the employee put down some comment, whether it be good or bad at all.
That may be one of the things that you're evaluating them on.
An ability to write?
The ability to put something in there that's going to make it meaningful, rather than just a one, two, or three.
May I make a suggestion?
Yeah, you are.
Once you have selected what form you want to use, which style, we can do a self-evaluation, part of that with narrative for each one. I personally do think that there is merit in the self-evaluation, only because oftentimes, when you folks are doing it, you're looking at a snapshot in time, and it's only maybe one or two things that stand out, that you might not recall, something else that might be important that the individual wanted.
Yeah.
And it's a very tense situation when you're sitting in an evaluation to come up with answers. So I think in advance, it might give food for thought.
Right, right. I think we ought to have one. Just depends on what you're following.
I guess I'd go along with that.
All right, do you have this one?
No. Can you take a peek?
Yeah. I think evaluation is very important. However, I don't think it ought to be something that ties everybody down and you spend hours and hours evaluating people. I think it's something that can be fairly precise, show how good a job they're doing, or how poor a job they're doing, where they want to improve themselves, and call them in and sit down and talk with them about it.
May I suggest goal setting as well as part of that? Because I think that really narrows the focus a little bit. You either achieved them, or you didn't. So your first one that you do may be the most difficult, because you don't have those goals.
Yeah.
I may be a little numb, but I don't understand. Section one on this one, job performance, 60% of total score, score the points, average score equals that number times 15. What is the 15?
That's... you know what? I wanted to give you different samples. I don't personally like that one. I like the one that's Rockingham or Merrimack, with the blue, yeah.
This is not very own, isn't it?
No.
Carol County.
That was written that way.
I've changed it over.
You fudged it over?
I did.
Okay. Well, I don't like that one.
I don't either.
All right. What do you... how do you feel about that one?
Is there another one?
You've got this one, I think, haven't you?
One with the blue?
No, I have the self, only the self-performance, I have. Where does this come from?
This is on the back.
From another county?
Did you get this one?
No.
I'll make you a copy.
Did you get this one?
Yes. And is that another one that's been plagiarized from somewhere, or is that...
Yes.
Yes. Do you know what county this one came from?
She just said, that was Rockingham.
Did she say Rockingham? Boy, it's a pretty incomplete one. It's a pretty good one. Employee status, full-time, part-time, are still moving. Moves in frequently.
I think this one gives you something to make the comments with.
I don't understand this table, evaluation type, probation, progress, probation, conclusion, and... oh, I see, you check which type of...
Yeah. It's an annual evaluation.
Do we give them a probationary progress report? We don't do that, do we? They're here for six months.
Yeah, we're going to do that on Howie.
Oh, he's done it in six months. This is probationary progress. This would be on the way to six months, as I read it.
Yeah, it's also got probationary conclusion.
You're right. Which is where Howie is.
Yeah, yeah.
And do we do... I'll ask Jan. Jan, do we do a probation, probation, progress evaluation?
No, we don't. We can, we can.
Well, I would think it'd be worthwhile. If you get someone that likes the job, but they're not doing something just right, it's an easy time to help them along.
And if probation is six months, would you be agreeable to a three-month progress report, then?
Yeah, I would. That's what I would do. Is this Rockingham that you've plagiarized there?
I believe so. I looked through all of the different county ones, and those two were the closest that I thought.
This is a good one.
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's a good one, too. Now, question. If somebody, a supervisor in a nursing home, goes on extended probation, then would fill out another one?
I don't think so, yes.
I'll bite. What's extended probation?
Well...
I thought in six months, they were either hired, or they were fired.
Well, it might go back to what you were saying, that we like the person, but maybe they don't understand the job.
Suppose you're going to give them another six months from that point on?
We give them extension. Or it's been in the case with the jail that we've... the superintendent has recommended that we extend them for a period of time.
Okay. Okay, are we pretending that this person, maybe I don't get it, are we pretending this person is a supervisor?
Yes, salaried exempt, yes.
She said...
Yep.
Oh, okay, I got you. Okay, yep, yep. So what would we do? We twist this a little bit, tweak it for a...
For a self-evaluation, yep. So the question...
Well, I'm understanding this is the one we'd use to review the person.
Exactly.
Self-evaluation is somewhere else over there.
Well, what I do is do a self-evaluation that mirrors those categories, so that you're comparing apples to apples.
So that gives us a supervisor's evaluation and the individual's own evaluation. What happens to somebody that... Around here, you're either a supervisor or a worker bee. Nobody in between?
Well, this is salaried exempt. So basically, you're talking about department heads.
Yeah.
So this is strictly for department heads? Why don't we make the Carol County Department Head evaluation?
We can. Call it whatever you like.
I like my idea.
I'd like to see a form like this, though, used by Howie, for example, or yourself evaluating Debbie. Why can't that be the same?
It can be. I know that with the different business units, there are different concerns. The nursing home evaluates a lot on different medical aspects and medical criteria. The jail does on certain policy criteria that's unique to them. We could come up with a generalized one, and just, they could tap on an extra page if they needed to for their criteria. It's up to you, however you want to do it.
Okay, I guess that's a question, then. Do we want to use this form to evaluate those people that directly respond to us? That's our responsibility. Do we want to have, like Janice says, the correctional department do their own? Nursing home do their own?
I think that makes sense to me. We have one for the super, or the directors that we evaluate, and they're in charge of their own facility. They have their own... working with Jan, come up with their own form. It would be nice if they could all be the same, but I can't see, because of the different job requirements, I can't see that you can have it all the same one.
Well, we could have some of it the same. We could have certain ones all be standardized, and then let them tag on their specialized information towards the end, if you'd like.
Well, I'm just thinking, and maybe you're not even supposed to ask these questions or talk about them, but I can see a question on their evaluation of somebody, the fitness of somebody working in the jail as a CO versus, you don't need that over here.
You don't want that over here.
You don't want that over there.
Right.
So that would be different.
I think the minimum we ought to do is review theirs, because the thing that comes up is that if we're going to terminate somebody, the first question that I'm going to ask, or that we should ask, can we see the last evaluation? And we want to make sure that there's something in there that we can make some judgments on.
Well, that also points to a bigger issue, which is that some people are extremely uncomfortable delivering negative information to a staff member that deserves it. And time and time again, you see requests coming to terminate what is basically, if you look at their reviews, employee of the year.
Yeah.
That doesn't look good in front of the department labor if it goes there, if they've had...
That's right, that's right.
So I think we need a little bit more training, supervisor training. Deb and I have been talking about trying to put together just a basic training for supervisors on different legal issues that come up, different ways to complete forms, the necessity of having those difficult conversations because of what ends up happening down the road two years from now.
Yep. Another thing that bothers me a little bit, you may agree or disagree with me, but when we do an evaluation on a supervisor, it shouldn't be construed as retaliation for something that they may have done wrong, or whatever. And hopefully, that the evaluation wouldn't be looked at as retaliation.
Well, I think you're going to find some... Anywhere you go, you're going to find some person or some employee that's going to take it that way, whether because of past events, or... So I don't see... I think you just have to come up with a form you're going to use, and realize that 1% or 2% of the people that use it are going to claim it's retaliatory, when it really isn't.
Should that be on the form, that is not used as a form of retaliation?
Sure. I think probably what you're talking about is oftentimes, when someone's doing an evaluation, there are certain events that stand out over the course of the year. They may have been resolved, done, but it still stands out. And if that makes it into that evaluation, it's like, well, wait a minute, I thought we were way past that, and we put things into place. It's human nature that there are certain good and bad that are going to stand out. And you're really evaluating a whole year of performance, so...
Right.
Maybe in that way, the self-evaluation will be very helpful, if it addresses that.
Yeah.
But this form really doesn't give you the opportunity to pick out a single event from nine months ago and expand on it. I mean, you might say in passing, well, you know, during the month of April, fishing season is opening, you're coming in here 9 o'clock every morning, I hope the trout fishing was good. But, you know, you can't, you can't put some... That, there's not enough room where you might want to say, you know, we can't deal with your tardiness on this, on an ongoing basis.
But that's a starting point. We can modify this however you want.
That leads to another question, Jan. How much trouble are we going to get in if we come up with an original evaluation, and then we have somebody that's worked here 10 or 12 years, and who knows what goes wrong? And then the labor board looks at it and said, well, gee, I see you've changed your evaluation three times in the 12 years. Are we getting, are we opening up a Pandora's box?
Not at all.
Because we didn't use the same evaluation sheet throughout that whole period?
Not as long as you are using the same form for all exempt employees.
Okay.
You have the right to change your forms at any time you want. It's just as long as it's applied consistently across the board to all salaried exempt. And that includes, for example, if Howie were evaluating Becky, or Bob Murray, because they are salaried exempt, he would also use those forms.
We wouldn't, but...
He would, right. Howie would, when evaluated.
Yeah.
Now, this form, if you just took away the supervisor, and Howie was going to use it on Mr. Murray and Mrs. Mason, all you have to do is tweak it a little bit, and you could use the same...
Yes. Because in that sense, what you're evaluating is the leadership and supervisory skills. You're not evaluating their technical medical skills.
Yeah. I think this is the form that we should be using.
I like this one.
How about you, Asher? You like this one?
Yeah, I like this one.
And I will, in deference to Mr. Brown, I will make a motion next week that we accept this evaluation.
Second.
May I ask Mr. Brown a question?
Sure.
Does that work for you, Stephen? And that's what you're getting at, isn't it?
Yeah, because I guess it's, you know, basically, a work session is an effort to deal with the things, the necessary issues at hand, and in turn, cutting down the length of the actual meetings. So, like I said, I...
The actual meeting for you.
Well, not for me, but basically...
Doesn't cut us down for us.
Well, no, because you're the ones on the, as the commissioner or on a board, you're the ones who also have to go through the work set, work session.
Well, just making, telling, saying that I will make a motion next week to accept this, does this meet your contention this morning, that this should be done in a public meeting?
The actual action, yes, should be done in a regular public meeting.
Okay.
But you're fine to discuss issues during a work session. I think that's what moral less it's getting to, you know? That it's a work session, but your actual actions happen at a regularly scheduled appointment.
Well, I don't have a problem with that on this one.
Okay.
So why don't we plan to make a motion next week? If Asher's, if you're happy with it, and you are, we'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay.
Yeah, next week. The self, the self-performance review, that's for the department heads also, eh? They going to do that?
Yeah. Well, what you're going to do is you're going to make a self-evaluation form based on this.
Based off of that, yep.
It may not necessarily look like that.
For all the department heads, yeah?
For all salaried exempt.
The ones that are responsible to us, directly.
Yeah, those were my questions.
And that would be Will?
Yep.
Howie?
Mm-hmm.
Kathy?
Janice?
Janice? Would it be Murray?
Jason?
Jason?
I think Bob Murray is.
Is Murray a report to us?
No, he reports to Howie.
Oh, okay, you're talk... all right.
And Howie, Jen.
So that would be five, is that correct, that we get?
Jason, if you have Jason. Will, Howie, Kathy, Janice.
We have no human resource, human service person as such. That was combined in your department.
Right.
So you'd do Debbie. Okay?
Yep.
All right. You want to bring up the situation with Jason on...
Yes. Does everybody have a copy of this, or a money on it? I think he gave one to all of us, did he not?
Did he give it last week? When did he give it to you?
Uh, yes, it looks like it was last week I had it.
So I didn't read it.
No, I don't have it with me, but...
Is this what it's... because I was something on my desk, is this it?
Um, yes.
February, yep.
So you must have had it there, too, Mr. Chamberlain?
Yep. Probably sitting on my desk.
I think you gave me yours.
I did, that's where it is. Thank you. Okay, you want to make some comments on it, since you're responsible for the jail, Mr. Asher?
Um, no, but let's get on through it. And I'm responsible for the jail, but I am not a jailer. And so I think we have to look mostly for things that might cause us a problem, rather than what might cause Jason a problem.
Yep.
You look at it.
I did.
You had a chance to look at it. And what is your comments or recommendation?
We're asking, I think, someone who is doing a transport to make a medical judgment, it sounds like, but...
That's what has happened. But what has to happen is they need to be brought to the jail. And when they're brought into the jail, that's where they determine whether they should go to the hospital, or whether they are accepted into the jail. That's where the determination is made, I believe.
Right. And if they don't take them, what happened is they said no, and they have to go over to the hospital and sit around with them if there's nobody there in the emergency room.
The only other question that I had on it, we have medical personnel at the jail, correct?
Yep.
All shifts?
They can be called in.
Because how does a supervisor, without medical training, make some of those judgments, or fail to make a judgment?
That was one of the... can I answer that, Mr. Chamberlain?
Yeah, good.
As I recall, when we hired the doctor and his right-hand man, one of the, one of the things they said, they would not accept information from somebody that wasn't, I don't remember whether it was a nurse, but somebody that wasn't qualified to give it, because they weren't going to make a judgment on Joe Schmo that just started as a CO and not a doctor. So, and their answer for the situation of them not being there is they said they could do it over the telephone. Then the question came up, well, what happens if we don't have anybody at the jail to give you the accurate... And you folks had some discussion about maybe having a nursing home nurse come over and take a quick peek, and then go back, as I recall.
You know, the jail also apparently won't take the recommendation of the ambulance crew as to whether that person needs to go to the hospital or not. To me, they, to me, I would think they would be qualified to say that.
The EMT would be the one, I would think, would be making the...
But I think in the past, I'm not sure if it's in here, that they wouldn't accept that. I think that needs to be in there somewhere. So who is going to make that determination?
Well, I think it gives the option for the person receiving, the shift supervisor or medical personnel. But I'd hate to be that person in intake, making, having to make that call, for either reason.
It happened once, whereby the person was in an accident, and they accepted him at the jail. Either that night, or the next day, they had to evacuate them to Docmouth-Hitchcock because it was internal injuries that they didn't know about. That's what he's trying, and we had to pick up the cost, I thought. And that's what he's trying to do. But I think by law, I think we have to accept him.
And here's the... do you get highlighted area or not?
Yep.
This is the one...
This is the part portion that was changed.
So only page three, that is the change?
Yeah.
Well, the last paragraph answers your question. Last highlighted one. If I read it properly.
Yep.
EMS agency says whether they-
The Delivering Law Enforcement Agency will be required to produce a patient sign-off form from the local EMS agency having jurisdiction in the event the detainee has been evaluated and refused care or transport for a medical condition. This form will be kept part of the permanent record.
I don't like that. But what, maybe some young kid says, "I'm fine and I don't wanna go." Next day, he finds out he's got, he's been hit in the head and, we're in for all kinds of expenses.
Well, I think-
I don't think it should be left up to the-
I think he has a right to refuse it, though.
Yeah, that's right, probably does.
How did the other jails handle it, do you know?
I think this came from other counties.
Okay.
What they do.
So, he copied this from another county?
I don't know if he copied it, or whether he made changes in it, but I believe that he looked at other counties' recommendations. Immediate medical attention is defined as a medical condition which needs immediate evaluation to prevent the death, severe or permanent disability, or to alleviate or lessen objectively apparent or disabling pain. Signs and symptoms of objectively apparent or disabling pain may include, but are not limited to, visible injuries with severe bleeding, deformity, fractures. Two, severe altered mental status due to intoxication level, not oriented to person, place, date, cannot walk under own power without excessive assistance from staff, or is unresponsive. Three, signs of shock, including rapid heart rate, cool pale skin, profuse sweating. Four, chest discomfort described as pain or pressure with or without difficulty breathing. Five, difficulty breathing, pale color, uses auxiliary muscles to assist breathing, inmate sits in a tri-py position with hands on knees. And six, traumatic head injury. Well, what say you all?
So, he gets somebody coming, he's bleeding, and he's obviously in bad shape, and he says, "I wanna sign this off." You let him in the jail, let him bleed to death? That doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't.
That makes us liable. I think somewhere in here, it ought to say something about the emergency, whatever you call him, emergency technician, has some responsibility to let the jail know whether, if the, if the kid has signed it, or the guy, or woman signed it, that know that somehow it should be overridden and be able to go, take him to the hospital. You know, frankly, David, I'd be a lot more comfortable if Jason was sitting right here, so we could ask him these questions, because part of this, I can see what he's trying to do, but part of it doesn't make sense. It almost looks like we're increasing our liability, not lessening it.
Well, it says, "Visible injuries with severe bleeding." That's the exception, they get sent to the hospital. They won't accept them. I mean, it is a, somebody has to make that decision, and I guess it's maybe the inprocessor that makes that decision. Or-
And that doesn't get any medical experience?
Well, you have the-
The only person around is either the medical person that happens to be at the jail, that's how it happens, or if there's nobody else, the person comes in with him in the ambulance.
Right, right. Yeah, it's a hard, it's a hard thing to do.
Well, I would like, I'd like to have Jason come in and sit down and discuss this with us.
Okay.
Because, too much.
All right, let's look at, if you have any questions on protective custody halls. Detainees will not be authorized to be held for protective custody, first of all, to New Hampshire RSA 135C28 unless the person is under the influence of drugs or alcohol and held under RSA 172, or the person has accompanying criminal charges and held present So, those are the changes. All right, I think one thing, you need to find out from Jason whether he's given this to the chiefs of police already.
Yes.
He may have done that already. They may have some comments.
Well, the sheriff certainly has some.
Yep.
He wants to.
And there may be other areas in here that they may have questions on.
Well, it looks to me like the only thing he's changed is the highlighted areas.
That's true.
Looks to me like the others have been there, policy all along.
They may not have had a chance to comment on the rest of this, okay? I mean, this whole document talks about a rival or a combative inmate, it talks about how they exchange clothing, laundry, the clothing that they've come in on, if it's soiled, the reeks with whatever.
Are you taking any input?
What's that?
Are you taking any input at all, from the public?
We said we wouldn't in the work session.
I understand, and that's what I know, but I, I think some comments might be helpful.
I'll give you, I'll give you the opportunity, go ahead.
Due to liabilities and such, and the fact that a person may be involved in a crime, which is yet to be disputed, but in the case they're in your custody.
Yep.
First off, you'd really need qualified personnel to make the evaluations. Maybe consider videotaping, because their right to privacy is limited under those circumstances, yet you still have to consider constitutionality, okay? Videotape-
I think they have videotape, that's something I might-
The assessment, videotape the assessment of the individual, first for competency, and, you know, attentiveness, and, you know, their ability to converse with you and so forth, and once that's determined, then you would ask them the question whether or not they want to accept the responsibility of treatment or non-treatment.
Yep.
And that would take the responsibility off the county, county at that point, but even still, if later issues should be discovered, it's still the county's responsibility to get them to proper care at that point. And that would relieve you of all the liability.
Well, see, I think, the thing is that whoever's in the in-processing room, and the police department that's bringing this individual in, they know whether there was a crime committed or not.
Of course, right.
The person being brought in is still not guilty, until proven guilty.
That's right.
If there's been an injury, and it's, it's severe, where there's a lot of pain, where there's bleeding, severe bleeding, I would think that the ambulance would take him right to the hospital, but-
Well, the county couldn't accept the responsibility of it, especially where it's so obvious, you know?
Yeah.
And I, I don't think that, you know, even constitutionally, a person has a right to terminate themselves, in the fact that, you know, there's things pending, health-wise.
Yep.
It is unlawful to take your own life, and if they refuse the medical assistance provided, then essentially, they're breaking the law. You're not, you're not allowed to take your own life.
No, but I believe it, no one can force medical treatment upon anyone.
It's a matter of accepting the responsibility to yourself, whether, you know, you want the help or not, and whether you're willing to accept the circumstances therefore provided.
Right, but you have the right to, anyone has the legal right to decline medical treatment.
Yes, of course, but you have to determine where the liability will lie at that point.
Okay, we'll hold this over until Jason can be here.
Yeah, I'm gonna get to talk to Jason.
You know, who's gonna carry the weight of that? You know, because among people at that situation at that time.
In this particular situation, if it comes down to, and someone knows that someone's, you know, physically hurt, they either sign off on it, or they're taken to the hospital.
Right.
No end of the box.
Yep.
But someone does have the legal right to decline medical treatment.
They should have, absolutely.
Okay. We wanna talk about this vendor contracts. Did you get that from Howard Chandler? Last revision was February 25th.
You want to sit with me?
Twenty thirteen.
Sit with me.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't get any vendor contract, why was that? Did he bring it in?
I don't know.
What is your?
I don't care, I don't need your-
Did he hand it out?
He's talking about, Commissioner Babson has raised a question about, we've been paying this, what's the name of that?
McKesson?
McKesson. A lot of dollars for medical supplies to the nursing home. And anything over $5,000 is what would be put out for bid. What he is doing is, he's looking at revising the vendor contracts. I think we're gonna have to take more time to look at this, we'll make copies of it.
So, why didn't, why didn't he put it out to bid?
Well, in some cases, from what he has said, that we've always done it that way, but that's not a good reason for it. There may be vendors that don't carry all the medications, and so, and the medication is recommended by the doctor or whatever, and only one firm carries it, kinda hard to believe, but I think that's what he has said.
Well, this is mostly, these stuff that McKesson signs, are mostly medical supplies.
Right.
Not, 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 not-
Medications?
Not medication.
Okay.
And the question is, each one of these is, each one of these invoices we get is well over $5,000, and the law says $5,000.
Yep.
Can we go out and give a contract on an annual basis that, that allows us to bypass that $5,000 requirement, because we've now given a contract for the whole year for $50,000? Or $100,000, or whatever it is?
Medical supply, you would think you have different families.
True. Well, when we sign the checks, there's a whole bunch of them, but this McKesson's the big one.
Can I make a comment? I mean, I've worked with a drug company during therapy, and the reason they mostly use McKesson is they do daily trips. And they are the biggest supplier, the rest of them, you have to wait weekly or whatever.
Do you know where they come from, ma'am?
McKesson?
Yeah.
They actually come out of Massachusetts, I believe.
Okay, 'cause the bill comes from Minnesota or Michigan, somewhere out there.
But we have a distributor right in New Hampshire that comes out of their warehouse.
Oh, okay.
And you can actually get on the phone from a pharmacy or a hospital, contact them, and they'll have the drug there the next day, in case of an emergency, whatever.
McKesson, well-
McKesson is the biggest supplier of everything.
It could be the reason why they-
They use them.
Well, that's part of it, and a lot of the other personal items that they order for people, I'm sure that they get billed for that themselves, so.
Those are all according from our bills.
It's very expensive, medication is very expensive. And we're allowing it to be that way.
Well, thank you for your information.
No problem.
I assumed they were shipping it in from Michigan.
All right, maybe we need to talk. You make copies, you don't have a copy of that, right?
I don't believe I do either.
Would you make a copy of that?
Yeah.
For yourself and for Commissioner Babson? And we'll try to put that in the agenda with, I'll try to speak with Howie before our next meeting, before we discuss that.
Why don't we get Howie and Lisa to come in here, 'cause she's the one that does the ordering.
Yeah, yeah. All right. The next, what are we gonna do regarding this wood processor?
Well, I'm gonna support it, I know that.
I'm gonna support it too, but I think we gotta have some really good data to help us support it.
So, do we sit down with Willie? I called him up, when I did mine, I said, "Well, you know, $20 a, $20 a cord for chain and oil and gas is a lot of money, that's probably six or seven bucks is closer to the truth."
Yeah.
And all the way down through, he'd, he'd use very conservative figures.
The wood processor is set at $67,000, don't you?
Yep.
$65,000, yeah.
$65,000.
Well, I get a lot of hen scratching here, but I tried to do a firewood department, wood stove only, let's say we're not into the campfire wood. We purchased roughly 110 cords of firewood for $14,500. So, that's about $131.81 per cord.
That was Willie's figure too, wasn't it?
Yep.
Okay.
And processing, I believe he said there were two employees. One runs the processor, the other one is cutting up the log length and the four.
And it was something like $72 a cord.
$72 per cord, and plus six inmates, and that came to $7,900, let's say $8,000. Gas chainsaw and so forth, $20 a cord, if you looked at the total cords, that was like $2,200.
Yep.
Which seems like a lot, for gas, chainsaw, sharpening and so forth, for a year, $2,200. The wood processor that we presently have costs us $18,000. It's over 10 years old.
Was it new when we bought it?
Yes, it was. If you look at that being $1,800 per year, then if you look at delivery of the firewood, it's one employee plus probably two inmates. Fuel, he estimated at $20 per trip, round trip, and if you look at a two-cord minimum, and if it's a two-cord minimum, let me think here, at $20 a trip, he had 55 trips, that's So, the total came out to cost, if my figures are correct, $26,420 for a year, that's what the cost is of our firewood operation. Now, if we look at the income, two-cord minimum delivery, and I'm pricing this at $300 a cord.
That's a problem, 'cause it probably should be $275, but go ahead.
Yeah. It came out to $33,000, 55 times 600, $33,000. So, the profit then was- So the profit then was $7,280.
And that's not a true profit picture, because we haven't put any money down towards the wood processor.
Well, I'm... No, I'm saying that our old wood processor cost us $1,800 per year.
Oh, you're working... Okay, I'm with you. I'm sorry.
They put that in there.
Yeah, okay.
All right. So that's just the wood for wood stove. If you look at the wood stove plus the campfire wood, the only difference... You still have that... That $26,420. That's the processing and the cost of delivery. What changes is the income. We still have that same...
Firewood collection is, David, that he said on a new processor, you wouldn't have...
I haven't got the data yet. I haven't got...
Oh, you're just doing still on the old wood splitter, doing campfire?
What we're doing right now.
Okay.
And he, I believe, told us that the number of cords that were used for stove wood was 57 cords.
I can't remember that.
Well, he... 57 cords for the wood stove and 53 cords for the campfire wood. So that comes out right there. 57, 53, 10... Yeah. So that comes out to 110 cords, which is what he said he gets out of that wood that's delivered. Okay. So the number of cords that goes into camps... That goes into wood stove is 57, which comes down to $17,100 strictly wood stove.
Purchased or...
No, this is what he comes...
Revenue.
Revenue, out of the 57 cords.
Yep.
Now, if we look at campfire wood, you have to look now at expenses and revenues. He claims that he sells 150 bags per cord at $275 a bag.
What is $400 and... 400 and what?
$412.50.
Is what?
He's selling 150 bags per cord.
So he makes... He makes 400...
$412.
Revenue from one cord in bags.
Right. $412.50.
Okay.
He has expenses of 150 bags. I think he said 27 cents per bag. So that's about $40.50. In the campfire wood, he has a part-time employee that's supervising. And apparently, it's $11 for a part-time employee supervising one cord. And you've got 53 cords. So that comes out to $583. So what I came down with was, in both cases, we'd make $12,542 profit. If we owned the wood... He also gave us figures on harvesting it, yachting it, and so forth.
It was $30 a cord if it gets delivered.
Yep. We would make a profit of $10,000 more, more like $21,442. So the bottom line that I came up with was $37,399. Now, that's where we stand right now. Once you add... Once you add a new processor... That's as far as I got. But once you add a new processor, you're cutting it down to one person, one employee, which reduces the cost. What is not figured in there is the amount of time that it's handled. Keep in mind, our present wood processor, you almost have to have straight logs. You almost have to have a certain diameter. It can't be any bigger than a certain diameter.
It isn't almost, you have to. They have to be full-length logs. So they gotta be cut to four foot. They gotta be... Whatever he said, the diameter...
Diameter was, right.
Had to be less than that. Then it's split. And I don't know whether we have a conveyor or...
Yes, we do.
Or a dump truck.
Conveyor goes right from the splitter into the truck. That's... That would not change. Same thing would happen. The same cost of delivering. The only difference would be, one, we only have one employee rather than two full-time. We'd only have one full-time. We wouldn't need any inmates, except when it comes to restacking the firewood.
The firewood.
Yep.
And bagging.
And then you got the bagging, right. But what he has done, though, is he has increased the efficiency of the operation. He's cut the time down. He's cut the expenses down in processing it. The other thing is, once that pole bond is built, he can do it in the wintertime.
Yep.
Everything would be right there in the pole bond, the processor, the wood, the whole business. So efficiency-wise, I don't know how you're going to measure that. I don't know how much time it takes to do a cord of wood that he doesn't... He didn't give us.
Well, the argument isn't gonna come... Isn't gonna come because of... It's gonna come because of the cost of the machine, the fact that they're gonna say you only use it... Well, when you're through adding them up, you can say five days. But spread that out over you using it a month or a month or two.
Yeah.
They won't even consider it's fill-in for these monkeys over at the jail.
Don't say that.
They gotta get out, rather than sit in that jail and figure out how to wreck the place. And...
It's good exercise for them, so that they sleep well at night.
Yep. But if you look at it like Representative Schmidt, Representative McConkey, ours as a business, it's pretty hard to justify, because you're not using it year-round.
You're not using it every day.
But you're generating on a return on your investment. It's pretty good. It's 5% or 6% or 7%. And they aren't very much paying back that kind of money these days.
And it would be paid back in a five-year period.
And hopefully, when you get ready to get rid of it, you've got some...
Value.
Value to it. The other thing that's very important, if he can't provide the bagged wood, then somebody else is gonna walk in and say, "Hey, I can do it and take it." And that'll be, by the time the delegation's through fighting over it, that'll be the last time we'll ever see that bagged wood revenue.
You know, in looking at the farm, I think you have to look at the total picture. They're responsible for the sewer. They're responsible for the water. If something happens to the sewer, they have to go fix it. Something happens to the water, they have to go fix it. Those are two critical jobs that that farm does. If there's no problem with either one of those, then they're either mowing lawns, or they're plowing, or shoveling sidewalks,
Green.
Or cutting hay, or picking blueberries. All these things, to me, plus maintenance, they're responsible for the generators. I don't know. I listed that whole bunch of things that they're responsible for. They don't get a lot of credit for it. All they look at is, if picking on the farm, the firewood operation. To me, as I think he said in today's report, was it? Still bagging wood a few times a week. Well, if there's something else... If we have a snowstorm, they're not bagging wood, they're shoveling sidewalks. We don't have a snowstorm, they're bagging wood. Or they're cleaning inside the maintenance building. So you really can't... I don't think you can look at it as the wood processor being used 100% of the time.
Nope. And it never will be.
It's a fill-in. It keeps them busy. It makes some income. Just to keep them busy, I guess I probably can't buy it. I wouldn't support it just to keep the inmates busy. But because it's an efficiency move, you can pay it back in five years.
But they are defi... They are creating some revenue to pay for their...
Their offsetting, yep.
Pay for their stay in the big hotel over there.
So I don't know. That's what I've done, where I'm coming from. May not be a good explanation for them to agree to pass it. So let's say they don't pass it.
We have the old machine that breaks down, and we don't get...
We spend a lot of time...
We may or may not be able to fill our orders. And sooner or later, people are gonna get mad at us and go somewhere else.
Okay.
And we're gonna lose that revenue.
So they go somewhere else. So we eliminate the wood. What are they gonna do? What are we gonna do with them if they're not processing wood?
I don't know.
They're not gonna be picking vegetables, blueberries in the wintertime. Yes, they could be working on a frozen water pipe somewhere or the sewage system.
And yesterday, they had seven prisoners out yesterday.
What were they doing?
They had done some packing, picking up...
Oh, pick... Oh, okay.
But that's... Usually, it's three or four, up to seven. That's three more that you gotta watch all the time. But it's not... There's three more also that are in there trying to cause trouble.
Amy Wood?
Go ahead.
How many splitting malls can you buy for the money that you'd like to spend on the processor?
How many what?
How many splitting malls could you purchase versus the cost of a processor? I mean, why not? If you have physically able prisoners that can actually split wood,
Yeah.
it'd increase your profits dramatically.
Well, first of all, you gotta have wood splitters with metal handles, because they'll break them. We had that problem with pruners cutting out around the stone walls or with axes, where they'd hammer right into a stone. You know, they destroy stuff.
Then you get the liability. One'll swing it at a log and miss it, hit themselves in the shin.
Yeah.
And we'll have to go to the hospital with them.
I understand, but...
In this case, the inmates are not running the wood processor. There's a permanent supervisor there. All they're doing is stacking wood, which... I suppose they could get hurt there. They could drop a log on their foot and whatever. So I guess, if we do away with the wood business, they would then sit in our jail and cost us...
Oh, we wouldn't want that.
$68 a day. And we wouldn't get anything back on them.
And we've got no revenue coming in.
And we have no revenue coming, to offset it. I think what... I haven't passed... I guess I shared it with you. I think we ought to develop a maintenance department. Maintenance department here is responsible for the sewage treatment plant. They're responsible for the water department, from the mountain all the way down to the village, which includes billing and so forth. They're responsible, under that, maintenance department, responsible for the farm, whatever income that they can derive from the farm. They're also responsible for maintenance, snow plowing, lawn mowing, those kinds of things. Maintenance departments don't make money.
But saving money is earning money.
Saving money is making money.
Because otherwise, you'd have the contractor.
That's where the farm comes in. It offsets some of that maintenance that has to be done. And I think the delegation... I would be surprised if they didn't support maintenance, whether it's around the new nursing home, the old nursing home, or whatever.
We didn't support it an hour later.
We need to keep our buildings up in shape. We need to pay attention to things that break down. If we maintain our stuff properly, it should last a lot longer. So all these other things is to offset those expenses. That's where I'm coming from.
That's right. I understand that.
And the blueberries fall under that. The pumpkins fall under that. Any vegetables they can grow that goes to the nursing home falls under that. It's just, it doesn't put the farm in the limelight. It puts it under maintenance.
Well, that's why I mentioned earlier, to look at the farm, go back a century, and look at how... What the purpose was then, how it benefited the community, or any other particulars that it would benefit.
Yeah.
And be self-sufficient. Most of all, we'd like to see a profitable, we keep it going.
Yeah.
You know? Put a hamster wheel in there, let it run on it. I mean, it's just, you know, going along that idea. You know, you've got labor there that can generate something.
Yep.
And that's what the idea is about. You know, not just have them sit in front of a TV on the couch.
There you go. When I first came 12 years ago, we had a pigery. And I believe we had...
Cows were gone by then.
No, cows were still here.
No.
Yes, they were. It was a mixture of dairy and beef. Because I remember a veterinarian came in, cut off all their horns, and there was a heck of a mess. Blood all over the place. I mean, it was... I don't know why that was done, but it was done. We had a bull, a pure horrific bull, poles.
David, 12 years ago...
And the university came in and did a study. And the study showed that they needed to make a better paddock, because they were up to their bellies in mud. And to do that, they had to do certain things. And the delegation said, "No, we're not gonna spend any more money on that." And so the cattle left. The pigs, on the other hand, were making money. They were sows. We had our own land race, pure land race pig.
They were beautiful pigs. They were beautiful pigs.
And how I got involved in it, prior to becoming a county commissioner, was that it was an inmate that was taking care of the pigs. And they were in the pigery, and they were put way off in one end of it. And the commissioner called me up and said, "Would you take a look at them?" I went down and... Well, he called me up to find out if all the pigs were there. I mean, the commissioners never paid much attention to the farm. Wanted to know how many were there. And so I looked at them, and they all had... Their ears were all black, because they had frostbitten. It was so cold in there that their ears got frosted, froze, and they were all black. And then I also found out that there were not as many sows as they thought they had. But on the other hand, the sows were bred. They sold a lot of piglets, a lot of good piglets. They cooked their own garbage. They had a regular stove, not a regular one, but a homemade one, where that was fired by wood. The state came in periodically to check the temperature, to make sure it's up to the right temperature. All of the leftovers from the nursing home went into that cookery. So that reduced the cost of food. I don't remember now why we got out of the pig business. That just escapes me, oh, right now. I know why we got out of the cattle business. Maybe it was because we didn't have that one good inmate that really took- I mean, that was his job, and he was out of the, out of the house of corrections every day. They had to, you know, farm crew had to go and get him and so forth, and make sure he got back in. But he took care of the pigs. There was no other expense, full-time employee, doing it.
It had something to do with boiling it, and then feeding it to the-
It had to be up to the right temperature.
Something like that, yeah.
The other thing we had when I first came, potatoes. We had a perfect coal cellar where the potatoes were stored. The problem came that, that portion of the building was taken down, so we didn't have that storage any longer. The other big problem was the weeds were getting ahead of them, and also the potato, Colorado potato beetle, just devastated them. Nobody at that time had a pesticide license to spray them. And so that was a case where, they had excellent potatoes, and most of those potatoes went to the nursing home. What happened there, again, was the people in the nursing home, in the dietation department, dietary department, rather take the potatoes out of a number 10 can that were all peeled and ready to be processed. At the same time as when the cattle, I know what happened to cattle, the cattle, we would send off two or three, two a month, I think it was. They had to be federally inspected, which was a problem. And the, the good cuts of the beef had to be made into hamburger, because it was fed to the, to the residents in the nursing home. They couldn't chew on a good piece of steak. So it was either went into hamburger, or roast, or those kinds of things. So we weren't getting the true value of that beef cow. So therefore, it went out.
Actually, because of the opposite, the higher portion of beef, the market, and just process more beef, so that the lesser cuts would go in the hamburger, you'd have a higher quantity of it by doing that.
Back at that time, when I was a county ag agent, they would have selectmen come in from the towns and give them a good steak. And they would talk about the budget and so forth. So that was before I was a commissioner too.
I'm glad you brought those things up.
But that's the, they've always been in the firewood business. They always cut their own timber.
Back in the cattle days, they had contracts around this area for various hayfields.
That's true.
And they'd go up polar rocks, granite.
Go up in granite.
Charlie Loyevy's, Charlie Smith's, they had them. And, and that's how they could afford to keep the cattle, because they had the hay to feed them and the hay to sell for revenue both. Now, all those fields are taken up by people that are, had them for years, and they're not about to give them back, 'cause you can't find fields without rocks around.
You know, based on just principle alone, Japan, recovering from World War II devastation, you know, they came up with products that were really shoddy, and I'm sure you remember, you know, "Oh, it was made in Japan, that's horrible." But they made a product that they could sell, and to get that dollar. And that's how they became what they are today.
Yeah.
By just having something that they could provide to get that dollar. 'Cause that dollar was the most important thing for success. So by whatever means you can, if you, you know, calculate, you know, your expenditures and your costs and all that, you still come out ahead. That's what it's about. That's how you stay ahead.
The other problem that we had was, the commissioners hired a, a farm manager. And I don't know how they get into it, but he had land, and he was taking the equipment down the road, county equipment, cutting the hay on his fields. The county would get some of it, he would get the rest of it. I wasn't in favor of that, and, and that was deleted. We do have, I believe, 20 acres up here on the Walker property. He pays for the lime, and I believe the fertilizer. We cut, and we, we spread it for him. But we cut the hay, and we take the hay and, and sell the hay. So he gets no profit, but the fields are open, and they're fertilized and limed. So that was a pretty good deal, and it's just up the hill. We didn't have to haul our equipment down through Wolfboro.
Right.
And quite a ways away, so. So that's the story on the farm, as far as I know it. We had all kinds of old equipment. We had old equipment that would cut up the corn. We built a silo for corn silage. That was that horizontal silo where the sand is kept now.
They'll put that into the stock, to feed the stock, yeah.
Yep, yep.
You go out, head out towards the end of that barn and go up towards the pond and the dam out there, the woods are full of old equipment.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, I guess we got off the track here.
You did.
I did, I'm sorry. You should have kept me on track.
Thanks.
I think we have an inventory. It may not be updated. Oh. If anybody wants to take a look at this, this is the hourly rates that are charged to different county departments. The delegation, I think, seems to have a problem when we talk about, what do they call it? Care grounds. Care grounds, there's a line item for care grounds in each of the different departments. And that is where, if we're mowing grass, or if we're shoveling snow, plowing snow, the equipment used, the backhoe, including the operator, it's a hundred dollars an hour. The plow, sand the truck, includes operator, seventy-five dollars an hour. Truck, including the operator, which means if they're cleaning up the lawn, the sand and so forth, that's fifty dollars an hour. Care of grounds, lawn mowing, including the operator, thirty dollars per hour. Snow blower, including operator, thirty dollars per hour. So he's got the figures as to what he charges the different departments. What did happen was, he stopped using, or, or collecting the data back in, I guess it was October or so, because, using these figures, he was using up what each building had budgeted. And so he felt, well, what the heck, why should I keep track of it when I'm using up their budget anyway? Instead, he should have come to us, my feeling is, he should have come to us and said, "Hey, look, I'm not making the money according to what we're charging from these different departments." And-
It wasn't too many years ago, John, that the backhoe was twenty-five dollars with the operator on the machine.
But this is a contracted cost you're talking about, something that's contracted from the outside, it's not within your own?
No, 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 it's here, within here.
But they charge back each of the departments. And what was happening, and one of the reasons the farm was losing so much money was, the backhoe and the operator was when the, when the outside world was getting sixty or sixty-five dollars an hour, our rate was twenty-five dollars. So they jacked them, these are all up, Willie's gone out and called operators and gotten the-
The going rate.
Going rate up to whenever he did it, which was a short time ago. So they're very accurate, and they never used to be.
Okay, I got it.
So the farm never showed, I don't wanna say a profit, but never showed the correct income.
Right.
Because we weren't charging it.
Always lower than it really was, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if you have the figures now, but it wasn't too long ago where it was costing the taxpayers about sixty, I believe, around sixty-eight thousand dollars to maintain the farm. But they weren't getting the right credit for it.
I see.
Follow me?
Yep.
And Will has been trying to make it more efficient, doing more things, like the campfire wood, to bring in more income to offset it, so that the farm looked where, where it should be.
I think it's a viable asset in the changes that may come down the road. And, you know, we need to look at those possible changes, because it's what's projected. And if we don't pay attention to what's projected, even by our federal government, then we could find ourselves in a real problem. You know, even bean crops or something that you can store up in barrels, you know? Just start cycling through the community, you know, if you have a, you know, ten-year supply laid up that you planted, and I'm sure it's not at that expensive crop where, you know, gonna make the funds deficient or anything like that. But to be able to lay them up and start cycling through, at least you'll have a, you know, a two-year supply on hand, something to that nature.
With the potatoes, we used to sell a lot of potatoes to-
Yeah.
To residents. In fact, I believe we even let them come in and pick the potatoes out of the field that we, that the potato digger didn't get the full harvest of.
Remnant, yeah.
Let it come in and, and take them for nothing. Okay.
I appreciate you going off the track, that was very interesting.
All right. So you wanna bring this up, Mundy?
Wood splitter?
Yeah.
Sure, somebody's got it.
The wood processor?
Yep.
Okay. Now I'll try to help with the figures. It, you know, I gotta say, sixty-five thousand is a lot of money. We paid eighteen thousand for it ten years ago. But it wasn't a commercial, that's why it's breaking down all the time. When you're pushing that much wood, a hundred and ten cords of wood through this thing, you just can't take it, 'cause it's not a commercial one. I haven't seen the one for sixty-five thousand before we ever purchased it. Somebody's gonna go look at it.
We'll see it.
Yeah. Maybe there's something that's a little bit cheaper that we can get the use out of for fifteen years or twenty years down the road. But a commercial one would be a lot stronger than one that's non-commercial, I guess, I'd say. Okay. What else do we wanna do?
I got-
Do you have anything?
Yes, I've got this bill on my desk.
What's that?
It's, it's got a thermostat.
Oh, that's regarding, yeah. Regarding the thermostats, that cost us nine hundred dollars to move in the new nursing home. It was, how many? Six?
Five.
Five?
We were told by Commissioner Solomon that-
Previous commissioner, yeah.
Well, first of all, we were told that the county was gonna pick up the tab, and I think that got me wound up, because we're not heating and ventilating people, and we didn't tell them where to put the thermostats, and when they were in the wrong place, now they wanna charge us to move them, because they went with the architect, so with my understanding, we were sending the bill to the architect, and Dottie said it was all, Commissioner Solomon said it was taken care of. According to that letter, it hasn't been.
Right. I think we ought to follow that up.
I thought Bob was gonna check with somebody here and-
Well, yeah, he did get a-
Well, that's the answer back he got, that's right.
Yeah.
So where is this bill going now? Are we gonna send it to the arch?
We haven't received the bill yet.
That's right, the bill hasn't come in.
But he said this is, we will be billing.
He said he's gonna send a bill.
We haven't, we haven't got a bill yet.
Bill is coming.
When he get a bill, we'll send it to the architect. Or Bonapage and Stone.
Well, Bonapage and Stone would be the place to send it, and then work our way down.
Okay, was there anything else?
Yes. This morning, Commissioner Bubson said it doesn't cost the taxpayers anything to go to DC. Is that something about dues to the organization?
Yeah.
What did you mean with dues were paid to the organization?
Each county pays, pays a dues to belong to the organization?
All right. And let me say that-
What organization are you talking about?
New Hampshire Association of Counties.
County counties.
We pay a yearly dues.
A yearly dues, yep.
Is that ten thousand?
Somewhere around that figure?
Yeah.
Let me, let me say, regarding that, that organization provides a prescription discount program. The reports that I have received, I haven't received one recently, but that we're saving the taxpayers four thousand dollars a month for those taxpayers that don't have any insurance coverage. They can buy their prescriptions at a reduced rate, and it comes out to like four thousand dollars a month. So four times twelve. Yep, exactly, yeah. So it definitely pays for itself. I mean, in three months, we pay the ten thousand dollars, that's twelve thousand. So over years, period. I don't know what it adds up to, but there's a tremendous saving for those people that don't have insurance. They're trying to work in a dental program, and our problem right now is trying to find dentists that would accept the program. Yes, there's a little bit of a fee that you, that you get, you'd have to pay, but yet you'd save, I don't know what the percentage is, but you'd save money on your dentist bill, whether it's a crown, a root canal, pulling teeth, or whatever. Again, it's, it's for people that don't have that insurance. So it definitely is a benefit to the loan.
Now, that DC trip, did they provide you some itinerary as to what was gonna take place during the course of your trip? Who the speakers were, and what the topic matters were and such? Is that something that you have in print?
I've got a copy. I, like I say, I got in at two, two-thirty just before-
I'm very interested to see what takes place down there, very much so. I, I went to DC this past summer for a protest, actually. And I was very impressed with the proceedings and everything, and how things were accomplished on that end. And very interested in what takes place in Washington. You know, what we do here ripples down there too.
Yeah.
I'm interested in knowing what.
The organization is definitely concerned about the feds passing their money through back to the county.
Downshifting to us.
Downshifting, and that's happening all over the country. Yeah, well, that's why they go and they lobby with the, with the congressman regarding that.
I wish, I wish there was like a lemon law for government. It broke, you don't pay for it.
Yeah.
It's called revolts.
Well, I'm glad you're here, we're on the same page there, that's great.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
I have one more thing. Talking about time sheets, last year you asked me to look in employee time, and see if it was accurate. I received a couple of this time sheets last year, and I looked into it. I brought up, there were some irregularities, but I find out, and I wanted to look in some other ones. What is this time different that you have the photo on it? Because you already asked me last year to look in certain stuff, and I have a couple of the sheets already. And I don't know if that is maybe next week for non-public, that you wanna discuss that, but we're going to non-public for this.
I forget why, why did we ask for time sheets?
Because there were some irregularities about mileage.
Oh. You mean about recording?
The county got overcharged, yes.
The county was overcharged?
No, it got over the last time, when, I think it was a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Let's bring that up, next meeting.
Yeah.
And you're gonna get that, or you've already got it?
Last year you asked me to check in, and I have a couple.
Okay.
And I was asking actually Kathy Gary if she has more of them, so I can look at all of them. Now I hear this morning, there was a photo taken, I cannot look into it, so I don't understand that. You asked me last year, I have a couple of them already, to look into it, and suddenly you said, "I can't look into it, it's a photo taken." Last year, when you told me to look into it, I just looked in, and it was no photo taken, so I don't know why it suddenly changed. So I don't understand that. There are some irregularities, and we need to look into that, if there are irregularities.
Okay.
Well, you, I think the question was, I thought you were questioning mileage, and, and the request was for time sheets, not mileage sheets.
Yeah.
That, that is what I got. That is the information what I got.
Did you get the mileage records for those people?
No, I'm asking, no, I didn't.
Well, they said you wanted, you wanted the, what do you call it, the hourly wage sheet or the time sheet, not the mileage sheet.
Wait a minute, which are we talking about here now?
Saying when, when, Janice came in here and said there was a request to get the, the time sheets, not the mileage sheets.
Right.
We voted no, that we didn't think the time sheets could go out, mileage sheets were different.
So, and was it the last delegation meeting that you showed me the- So, and was it the last delegation meeting that you showed me the mileage?
Yeah, I showed you. Yeah, and last year, I think I get some time sheets, still what you want me to look into. I still have a couple.
Let's, let's look at the mileage and make sure that those people that are getting money per mile, let's see if we can check it out, make sure the mileage is right.
Yeah, I'll already check it out.
And what did you find out?
It's over, yes, it's overcharged.
Can we, can we document that? Can we prove it?
Yeah, we have that.
All right, then, can you bring it next week? We'll talk about it non-public?
Yep.
Okay, good. We ready to adjourn?
I'm gonna motion to adjourn.
Minutes?
What about minutes?
I ran into the minute taker down stairs earlier. I asked her, 'cause I knew you were coming back, and asked her if she was taking minutes, and she said no. So, is someone taking minutes now?
No, nobody's taking minutes. What do you mean, the work sessions?
It's a public, it's a public meeting, you have to take minutes.
She asked for it, but I think Commissioner Sodden said she doesn't have to stay.
She didn't have to stay for the work session, but Commissioner Kenny has gotta find somebody that would take the non-public minutes.
I think he's a good one.
Our recording, our recording secretary does not wanna do that any longer. She'll do the regular minutes.
Right.
But she's tutoring students apparently and doesn't have the time to do the non-public. So, Commissioner Kenny, because it's her responsibility, she needs to find somebody that would do the non-public minutes.
Who's taking the minutes for this work session?
No one is taking it.
Nobody. 'Cause we're gonna bring that up at your request next week and pass a motion as to whatever it was we, we agreed on doing.
But, but, I mean, this is still a public meeting.
Yep.
And therefore, you're required by the RSA to, to produce minutes of this meeting.
Yep.
Today.
She's responsible for the minutes.
I'm responsible to correct them.
Well...
And the non-public do correct and store them.
And then store it.
I'm not responsible to type it, as we have a minute taker for typing it.